Well, we have an organization in town, the Brian Dagel Foundation, that may be able to help in that regard. Having resources available to talk to about whether you think there is an actual issue with your child or not, that's a good resource to have in town. And so, as I said, I will digress to the town budget. The only specific recommendation I have this year with regard to a line item budget is in Department -- what department am I thinking of? I'll get to it.
Bless you.
Well timed, Karen. We were waiting for to find her spot anyway.
Perfect time, Sneeze.
Oh, can somebody help me out? What's that, um, what's that department with the community services? Oh, here we go, 115. So, 115 deals with a lot of foundations that, that our community gets support from. And we fund these foundations to the tune of about $25,000 per year. And as I look at all of the foundations or entities on this list, they seem to be the same year after year. So what I would like to propose specifically tonight is to add the Brian Dagel Foundation into Department 115, Services to the Community, to the, for at least $1,000 this year. And then, you know, as times improve, maybe we can do a little bit more, a little bit better, but let's at least get them on the, let's get them on the page here.
So, I like that.
Okay, back to Board of Ed. I, um, for anybody that knows me, I really am a, a big supporter of education. I took a, um, this is on a personal note, a Director of Finance position for a not-for-profit education center in Groton. I'm making about one-fifth of what I used to make when I was a management consultant in private industry. So why do I do that? Because I believe in the mission, right? And, and I've only been there just one year now, but last December, when I was having to develop our budget, I was appalled when I discovered that our teachers in our organization hadn't had a raise in five years. And so, I put together an argument for these teachers and a plan. Now again, we're not-for-profit, so money is tight, we're losing state funding, just like everybody else, but a plan to at least get them a 1% increase in their salary plus a one-time 3% bonus. And I cannot tell you the hoops that I had to go through to get that approved, but it did get approved. And so, why am I bringing this up? Because I, I think sometimes, there's nothing sacred when you work for a not-for-profit. There's nothing sacred when you work for municipality. Everything is public information. And when you're looking at a budget that is heavily skewed towards salaries, there, there's no more paper clips to cut. I do commend the first selectman for putting forward a, a 0% increase in the budget. I know that must have been very difficult for him, and, and I appreciate it, I do. But I do, at, by the same token, a lot, a lot of the savings that were achieved were due to replacement of personnel, which is great, but some of the salaries that we see year after year are anywhere between 2.5% to 5% increases, and I just, it doesn't sit well with me. Because the very taxpayers that are funding those 2.5% to 5% increases are the very teachers I'm talking about that are getting 1% per year. So I just don't, one, I just don't feel it's right, and two, um, it's just not economically sustainable. So we have to do something. And, and I hope that my fellow board members agree with me on that point. So, I don't know, Elisa, I think you recommended a $10,000 cut to salaries. I don't know if that's the right number, but I'm saying that we have to do something in that regard. Generally speaking, if I look at the median wage in our town, I'm often conflicted whether we're a wealthy town or we really have people in need, because I hear both sides of this story. And I try to do my research, and I try to collect the data to, to see what our town can afford, and I always hear conflicting information. But, but let me say this. Let's suppose that the median wage in our town is $100, right? Median is not an average. It's, it's the point at which 50% of the population falls above that wage and 50% falls below. Now, I'm going to tell you that our household is above the median wage, and I'm not ashamed to say that. But, I would be deeply ashamed to admit that as an elected public person, I would be deeply ashamed if I didn't represent the people that fell below the median wage. That's what I was elected to do, and that's what I'm fighting for here. Um, so when I look at this budget, on the town side especially, there's not a lot to cut, other than maybe salaries. When I look at the education budget, you know, it breaks my heart because I am a big proponent of education, but we have been warning for years now. We have been warning for two or three years, state funding is being cut, the picture is worsening, we have got to do something. We have got to change the paradigm with which we budget. So, one misnomer that I constantly hear that doesn't sit right with me is that, please Board of Finance, don't cut our budget. You cut our budget year after year after year. This is a fallacy. We do not cut your budget. We reduce the reductions in your budget that you propose. Every year since I've been, this is my fifth year on the board, my sixth year going through a budget season, we have never cut your budget. There's always been an increase to the Board of Ed budget. But again, we have been warning that the time has come. And I'm not sure, even after all the questions that Mr. Nickerson answered with regard to what is the probability of our ECS being cut further, I have no assurances that we're going to get as much as what's on this paper. So if we were to pass the budget this evening, as presented, from the town side and the Board of Education side, it's, it's pretty well close to a 6% increase to our taxpayers. And I think, can we afford that? Again, I'm trying to weigh, uh, you know, whether we can absorb a 6% increase in the property tax. And the bottom line is, after all of my research, I think not. I think, I think afford, when, when inflation is running between 0 and 1% every year for the past five or six years, you know, at some point, you know, it's just not sustainable. And so I think this is the year that we make deep, deep reductions in your proposed budget because the future is uncertain and, you know, we need to do something now. So I do hope that with any reduction in your increases that gets proposed from this board, that you can find it in your budget to hire a psychologist, at least one, to go forward with your plan. But we're not here to say whether you should hire them or not. You know, we're, we're here to say, you know, you know, we can present our view, but it's really up to you to find the funds to do that. For years, we've been seeing the decline in enrollment, and even with the projections of the increases to come, we still won't be at a level of school enrollment that we were at when I moved to this town in 2005. I think there were 3,200 kids, and even with your projections in the next couple of years, we're just going to hit 3,000. But administration levels have grown, and I, I just think the time is, we, we have to tighten, we have to tighten. Ideally, I would love to hold the increase to the taxpayers at 4.25%. I don't think that's really feasible, but if we were, then we would need to get that budget down to $70,611,000. And, um, in addition to the cut for, from the Board of Ed, that would be taking out the revenue line item of $675,000 from the fund balance because this is the worst time to be rating our fund balance with the elementary schools coming right around the corner in terms of having to bond to, to fund those improvements. So with that, I, you know, that's, that's where my thinking is, and I have no specific numbers to recommend at this point. I'd like to listen to everybody before we, we get to that point.
So for the Board of Ed, you have no suggested decrease, and for the town, you have no suggested decrease?
I have an overall suggested decrease of the budget to $70,611,000. And I'm not sure that I'm, what, what I'm proposing that comes from at this point.
$70,600?
Is that about 2 million?
Yes, you're it.
About 1.5 million.
7, 2, 5, 1.6. 0, 3, 3, 9, 3, 3.
Well, if we took the money out of the fund balance.
Then it's adding additional.
Yeah, plus.
Yes, but I'm saying.
Well, that's separate, right? That's revenue side, and that's when you're figuring out your bill rate.
That didn't work.
Well.
But you want, you want 1.6, 1.5 off of this bottom line, off the budget side.
2, 3, 3, 9, 3, 3.
What I'm trying to do is to keep the amount to be raised by taxes bill. Do you want me to give you that number?
So the delta is 1,433,933. And then on top of that, you want to not use $675,000 from the fund balance, so you want to add that to it?
So if I pull out 675,000 from the fund balance, it's, we would have to reduce expenses by 675,000.
Right.
On top of the other 70,000.
Just to keep the same.
On top of the other seven, you said you wanted to get down to $70,600,000, but you don't want to use 675,000 from the fund balance to do it, so you need to.
No, that would include the 675,000.
Well, that would include.
That would include the 675,000 from the fund balance.
So you want to lower this by 1,433,933 more?
Minus 675.
Now again, that, that estimate I developed prior to hearing Anna this evening saying that we need to take 350,000 out of the 675,000 that we budgeted for this year. The, the latest information I had was that we had pulled $0 out of our $675,000 revenue line item to help fund the town budget. But now hearing that you need to pull 350 of the 675 that was budgeted, then this would change a little bit. And that, and that, it's kind of a moving target as we continue with our discussions. So you asked for my high level.
So you're proposing that we remove 1,433,933, which would come out of not touching the 675,000 from the fund balance, and finding an additional $758,933.
How'd you get that?
Because I took the 1.43333, which is the 70 million, and subtracted the 675,000. So the 70 million is 1,433 from the 72. That's the delta between there.
Close enough. I have 1,425.
Okay, so if there's 675,000 of the fund balance you don't want to touch, so that's half of that, and the other half would be 758, which would come from somewhere else.
Yeah.
Okay. 1,433,933. And from the Board of Ed, none, something, don't want to say zero, but some value. All righty then. Jason, you ready to contribute?
Yeah.
Please do.
Yeah, well done. I looked through the budget, and it's, it's really difficult to try to figure out all the, all the ins and outs, and try to understand what everyone's job is at so many different professions, the education, the department heads, but I, all of you do a great job researching. I spend a lot of time on this, but I still think it's, uh, very minute compared to the amount of time that you spend on this budget. So I try to keep a very high-level approach. I, I think from the general government, I mean, there's a 0% increase. I think you could find $10,000 someplace. I, I don't know where, because when you go and you look through it, I mean, you can nickel dime, $50 here, $100 here, it's, it's, it's hard to say where, but, I mean, I do worry about the increases of the taxes. I know that the services that the town provide us are a phenomenal job. When it snows, the roads are always clean. Joe Bregard does a great job with the town. I work with all department heads and all the, and all the levels downstairs, being the building department, the zoning official, the planning official. I know what kind of work they do. But on the flip side, you do look at some of the increases in the, um, salaries on year to year, and I know, being in a, a private industry, we're unable to give employees raises like that. And, and I wish we could, but it's the state of Connecticut and the state that we're in in the, in the local economy. But I, I don't want to get into all that. I just want to try to keep a high level. So I would like to see a $10,000 cut from the general government. Um, I know one of the sticking points was, you know, the fire study that got brought up, and that we were looking for the fire departments to find some economies of scale, and when they talk, their budgets are, are very tight, and they've, they've looked at everything from what they tell us, and I do believe them. Uh, you, you talk about the overtime, they look at the overtime. I don't know where, where you find money, but, um, I think they're just going to have to look really hard and see what we can do. And then on the education side, when you have almost a $48 million budget, what do you have, like 2.5 million dollars in revenue, say you have a $45 million budget, I would like to see a 10,000, a $200,000 reduction somewhere. I do know from some articles I've read and some things that I've heard that a social worker is needed at the, at the high school or maybe middle school level, but, but again, do we start with, was it three that were, were proposed?
3.2.
2.7. I mean, maybe that's a little aggressive to start with.
I don't think so.
But, you know, that's, that's where I am. And again, it's a very macro-type view of the, of the budgets, but it's a $200,000 on the Board of Ed and a $10,000 in the general government.
All right. So do you have a dollar value for the Board of Ed?
200,000.
200. I'm sorry, we were talking about the.
No problem.
Ed count for the other one.
I didn't, not 201 and 53 cents.
So you're suggesting 10,000 nonspecific from the town budget and 200,000 from the Board of Ed?
How much did he say for the town?
10.
10.
10.
All righty then.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, what do you?
So where am I at now? I guess I go last. Um, I've gone through this budget in detail. I've gone through the Board of Ed budget, I've gone through the town budget, and it's, it's tight. We all know it's tight, we've gone through it in detail. And, in fact, I would not propose a cut in the town budget because I would like to see room in the town budget to add, as Ann said, I've been talking about, a grant writer and a, what I call somebody to build the business cases, because we do these three competitive bids, and the department head sometimes, it, it pulls their time away, and they're not maybe the best people to do these competitive bids. I'd like somebody to give them help, but I really think we need a grant writer. I don't know what a grant writer costs. I'm guessing $60,000. To offset that $60,000, what I would do is from miscellaneous supplies, code 320, what do you call those codes?
Department?
I haven't got there yet. I haven't got there yet. Where that, where that tech writer goes, where that grant writer goes, that's your call, right? Where he, where he goes is going to be maybe in your office, maybe in finance, maybe wherever. But miscellaneous code, miscellaneous supplies, object code, is that what you call them? Okay. So under miscellaneous object code 320, um, I would take $500 out of Department 104, I'd take $250 out of Department 107, I'd take $500 out of Department 118, I'd take $500 out of Department 224.
They can't record that.
Yeah.
So you'll tell it later.
I'll, I'll tell you slower. 104, $500.
Okay.
107, $250. 118, $500. And 224, $500. And that's just a function of growth over last year, just looking at which ones grew the most and which ones seem to have the most margin. Not a lot, it's 1,175, or 1,750. I don't know if we can do it, but we said Water and Sewer got a big cut in the past because we didn't have the money to pay them, and now a 10, 10% a year increase, year over year. I propose that we go to 5% this year. Don't know that you can, but now as times are tough. If we did it in the past because times are tough, times are tough. I'd go to 5%. That would cut that line item, code 255 in Department 113 by 1,781 and 12 cents. Dispatch overtime, I think we talked about, 213, part-time overtime. It sounded to me like there was $5,000 margin in there, so I would suggest that we decrease that by $5,000. We also talked about computers for the police department. They wanted a $5,000 increase, which was a 50% increase. I would reduce that by $2,000 and only give them a $3,000 increase. And that's really all else I could find in this bare-bones budget. Beyond that, what I would do is I would take $3,000, the Niantic Fire Department had $3,000 for fuel that they shouldn't have had, it should have gone to ambulance. So what I would do is I would take that $3,000, put $1,500 towards volunteer fire department recruitment, and I would put $15,000 to Flanders Fire Department recruitment. Take that $3,000 that's in the budget and use it for something that's going to be a cost savings, because if we can get some part-time, I mean, if we can get some volunteers in there, it's going to save us money in the long run. So my focus on this budget is trying to figure out how can we decrease long-term costs and how do we get revenue into the departments. Beyond that, I think there's some things in here in these, these departments that, they put money into their overtime budget because they want it to be there if they need it, which if every department puts a little bit of money in the corner, there ends up being a lot of money in the corner. So I would suggest taking $2,000 from Department 110 Elections for their 401 and 402, and $4,000 from Department 216, and, damn, I got myself confused now. Oh, that's Police Department. Line item 513 Foot Patrol, and $8,000 from Department 216, which is PD overtime, regular overtime, I guess, and put all that into contingency over payroll 120. So take everybody's little fudge and stick all the fudge in one corner.
I like that.
Thank you. And then I would add, yeah, okay, um, and then I would add to, I, I said add the $60,000 to Department 120 contingency because we really don't know where it goes yet. If you find a, a grant writer, that's great. If you don't, it's in contingency, and they can go wherever it needs to go later on. Again, a grant writer and a cost-reduction business case writer, anybody that can just do some of that bean count stuff that department heads maybe aren't so good at. Other than that, I looked at capital, I don't see a lot of capital we can touch, I'm, I'm done. So that's where I see for the town. And I think if I add all those up properly, it comes up to an, an increased budget of Not the direction we want to go, but it's an investment in our future. I think we have to. We're going to be in this world of doo-doo for years to come. Board of Ed, as has been said, administrative costs keep going up. I understand the state's requiring more stuff, but it just feels like administrative costs keep going up, student population's going down, teacher populations going down, administrative costs continue to rise. I said decrease it by 36,000 because that's about what the growth is this year. I would suggest for line item 431, and I don't want to go through each one of these, line item 431 decreased by 10,000. You asked for a $12,950 increase, so I would decrease that increase a little bit. Line item 441, which I put in big exclamation part, that's paper, decrease paper by 5,000. I didn't go to each individual school, this is just all on your summary sheet. Advertising I would decrease by 5,000, $3,000 and try to use more social media, try to use more of the free press. Big increase in travel. It seems like you should be, we have, takes us where I work, an act of Congress now to get approved for almost any kind of trip. So I think you can decrease your, your travel by 4,000. Miscellaneous supplies, I put 10,000, you asked for a $13,700 increase. You asked for 177% growth in line items 693, which I don't remember what that is. It seems like you could do half of that growth this year and half of that growth next year. I would suggest that you decrease that by $2,000. And then 731, 732, I said decrease by $10,000 by reallocating. Oh, audiovisual, yeah. It's, seems like a big percentage increase. So without getting into specifics, because you have the power to control your own budget, where you put it, as we discussed, my total for the Board of Ed came out to just shy of 100,000. So I would suggest a decrease in the Board of Ed budget, $10,000, and I would.
100,000.
100,000. What did I just say?
You said 10.
No, I'm sorry. I wrote 100, I'm sorry. Other than that, $100,000 decrease in the Board of Ed and an increase to line item 120 of 44,400 and whatever it is, 50, with the other decreases that I mentioned. And that's what I have to say. All righty then. With that said, do we want to have within the board members any more discussion on anything specific? Have we spurred any interest in?
So, yeah.
A lively debate.
I'd like to understand what the consensus of the board is on allocating or pulling 675,000 out of our fund balance to support our budget. We've talked about it, but I haven't heard what we're going to do about it. I'm concerned about it. I think it's going to jeopardize our, our bond rating, and I don't think it's a good practice. It's like, your salary gets cut at home 15%, so you just take money out of the oil budget or something to fund it, and I just think it's going to put us in a more vulnerable position. I'd like to know what the rest of the board thinks about that, because as we, as we make motions on both the town and the education side, it's going to affect our overall mill rate if we don't consciously decide what we want to do with that number.
Do you also have a proposal to where to make up that 650, 75,000?
Well, um, I mean, we could cut the budget somewhat on the town side. I, I think that it can't sustain that much of a cut, for sure, but I, we, we need to talk about it.
Okay, we'll talk about it, just wanted to know the whole.
No, I, I don't have a specific suggestion.
Okay. John, what's your position on the fund balance decreasing or using 675,000 of the fund balance to help defray the mill increase or cuts to the budgets? Because that's really what the, the two sides of the coin that we're looking at. Do you have a, do you have a feeling about?
The total fund balance right now is 5.2 million.
Is that right, 5.2?
Yes.
So the way this revenue is, the 675 would be added to that.
Subtracted from that.
Subtracted.
Subtracted.
If, if it's used.
So that would be 4.4.
If we used it.
This year, this year we're going to use it. We're going to use at least more than half of it.
But the budget is built on using it.
So that 5.2 right now equals 7%.
Yeah, so last year, when the state took away some of the income or revenue that we were going to get from the state, we used that increased fund balance to offset the state decrease. So what we're proposing this year is doing the same thing. So what we're proposing this year is doing the same thing. So how do you feel about that? So are we already taking...
If we do that, how much is that going to affect the bond rating? You have any idea?
Subject, John, we just don't know.
You don't know?
We don't want to be going backwards in our, I'm thankful that you're sensitive to that. I mean, about a year or two ago, we were talking, well, let's take all the money out. No, I'm glad that, because we're all on the same page. We need to protect that fund balance. If you take the six seventy, six seventy-five out, it's going to add to the mill rate. When you do your calc at the end, or you're going to take it out of...
Or you cut expenditures.
You're going to find expenditures, but...
Well, I'm just saying.
Right, right. So it's one or the other, but you'll figure that out. There's an expense side and there's a revenue side, and I think that revenue side, just like last year, and boy, didn't we struggle? Because the state was struggling. We don't know what that revenue number's going to be. We don't know if it's going to be worse or better. And it was better last year than we were proposing, because we were running off of the governor's numbers, it was much better. And then it got much worse. With the late cuts, after the legislature did their job, the governor came in in the dark hours and did his dirty work.
Jason, you had something you were going to say?
We're already using three hundred, the six seventy-five, isn't that correct?
We don't know what the total's going to be.
That's generally what we're thinking.
Is that where you think the total?
I'm predicting about three fifty.
And that was built into mill rate, it was built into the budget, and we were supposed to spend that.
Well...
That was, well, we were, I mean, we're supposed to not spend it down to zero, but it is a result of the good work you do.
But we would...
And we do to have very lean budgets, we don't have a lot left over. There were, just go back, maybe your first year on the board, we had seven hundred thousand left over, we used to throw money into fund balance and it was gaining every year.
And that's the challenge.
But the budgets are much bigger.
And that's the challenge, is if we just keep taking little bits and little bits and little bits, little bits set up.
Paper-thin budgets right now, which is a good thing, we did our work.
My answer is, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Unless somebody can convince me otherwise, I'm against it.
Against what?
Using the six seventy-five.
So the same question that I asked Lisa, would you increase the mill rate, or would you decrease...
If we can't find any savings somewhere else, yes.
You're against using the six seventy-five of fund balance?
Yeah.
Correct, okay. I just want to make sure I understood you right. But you don't have a suggestion really where we can pull, how we could make the equation work?
Not at this time, no.
So if we're not going to take more out of the budget, then we're going to have to increase the mill rate?
Well, we didn't say we were going to take more out of the, we didn't say we weren't going to take more out of the budget, we just...
That's what I'm asking, the question is, if we take that money out of the revenue side, are we proposing alternate revenue, which is increasing the mill rate, or are we proposing decreasing the budget? Because at the end, it's going to be one or the other. If we decrease one revenue, we have to add a different revenue, or we have to decrease
I don't really think it's an either or, I think it's a hybrid solution. I think we have to come up with the right formula, what makes sense for the town in terms of not reducing services drastically versus, you know, what additional burden can the taxpayers take on? It's not an all or nothing.
Okay, so...
I mean, I am also against taking the six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out of the fund balance. If, I'm not sure if anybody remembers last year when we went through this process, I was against taking six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out of the fund balance. That's more than ten percent of what we have in there. So all we need is three or four years of actually using that money that we set aside, and we're going to be pitifully low in our fund balance.
It's going to be bad.
You know, and with the bonding that's coming down the road, I just want to try to get the best rate that we can. So tonight, again, I came in thinking I want to remove six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from revenues, but that was based on the information that we had that suggested we hadn't used any of that to this point. So rather than removing the entire six seventy-five, I'd rather roll forward with what we're going to use this year. So maybe, maybe we remove three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from that six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar revenue budget. And I would much rather take the conservative approach of not taking out much at all and having you come before the board for a special appropriation if more is needed. Rather than have a blanket approach to cover unintended expenses, come to us when there's a specific need and argue the case. And not just for this board, because as you know, we're taped, there's people in the audience, come and make your case to the taxpayers with why you need to, why you need to spend those dollars. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm changing my mind a little bit based on the new information we've received this evening, that I would like to reduce that six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar fund balance withdrawal down to three hundred and twenty-five.
So that is a better way to state what I asked, whether or not you want to offset it with revenue or increase the mill rate, which would be an increase in the revenue or decrease in the budget, or a combination of both?
Yeah. I mean, if we, if we take, if we reduce that withdrawal to three twenty-five, then there's going to be three fifty that we'll pull from fund balance. We'll have to come up with cut expenditures by three twenty-five.
Or increase the mill rate by three twenty-five.
Yeah, we don't want to increase the mill rate any more than we have to.
I understand that, but just trying to keep it clear that there's three paths, or three inputs.
I'm just saying what I heard, I heard almost all of us zeroing in around two hundred for the Board of Ed budget. So if we want to get to where we're talking about right here, that would mean there'd be a hundred and twenty-five that we would take out of the municipal budget. Which I know sounds painful, but I mean, it's a twenty, what is it, a twenty-five million dollar budget? I mean, I think we can find a hundred and twenty-five thousand in a municipal budget, as painful as that is. The only other alternative is, none of us wants to go there. We are all concerned about how lean we're getting, dipping into the fund balance with our bonding coming up, so...
Okay, Jason, did you want to continue where you were saying?
I lost that thought.
Okay, so what is your opinion on the fund balance withdrawal of six hundred and seventy? Do you feel like that's appropriate? Do you feel like it's excessive, or do you feel like it should be none?
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs to be a hybrid approach, because we definitely don't want to jeopardize our bond rating going into these school renovations. It's, if we take out too much, it's just going to cost us the same exact, you know, the higher rates can counterproductive, we're just going to be paying more in the bond rating or short-term loans, or short-term, what are we going to do, short-term notes on that financing?
Are you...
Short-term noted until we bundle it together and then we go out to bond for, we're going to do three bond sales on this, two or three?
And when will that, and approximately, what fiscal year is that going to be?
Usually the following year.
Following year, two thousand eight, nine, eighteen, nineteen? Right, so it'll be in next year's budget. So we need to make sure this year, we don't have two years to... I don't have any answers for you right now, to be honest with you.
Okay. Dan, do you have any...
Just a question, maybe for Anna, I think last, one of the last meetings we've had, we've had a lot of meetings in the last couple of weeks, but I think I asked what that fund balance figure was. And so tonight I've heard five point two million. I recall, and I think I have in my notes from a couple of meetings ago, it was five point one. So do we have an exact number that we're dealing with, like we actually can, you know, this is what we've got before we start picking at it or taking it?
It's approximately five point two million.
At this point, okay, at this point in time, okay. Well, you know, I don't have a final answer on this, I'm really unhappy touching it at all. I have a very conservative approach, I would have a very conservative approach to this, you know, to the fund balance, leaving it and growing it whenever possible. But we are, you know, we are truly faced with, you know, dilemmas, so I don't have a final answer on it. It may take a combined approach, if that's sensible, because you don't want to be adding to, you know, our tax burden for our taxpayers. But, you know, in a perfect world, I wouldn't touch it at all, and I'd add to it every year, but that's just the way I'm thinking, so...
But being that it's not a perfect world, you would...
However, come on. Give me ten minutes, I don't know. Give me a few minutes, but I, yeah, I think that I would have to compromise.
You're lighting up this hybrid approach.
Yes, I think I'd compromise. Where, dollar for your wise, I'm not, it's not in my head yet what that is, but I, yeah, but I feel very strongly, as does Lisa and everyone else here, Camille, you know, and John, that we need to really be careful with that. And that's the trap that, you know, towns are falling into. It's in Connecticut, it's very, very difficult.
Okay. Camille, do you want to talk some more about the six seventy-five fund balance?
Well, I'll just say that what I'm hearing is if we just pull a portion of the fund balance back and we seek three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of savings from a budget reduction, if we take two hundred from the Board of Ed and one twenty-five from the town, then we're still at the same exact mill rate that we would be if we didn't, you know, reduce anything further than that.
That's correct.
And I did some quick calculations on that, and to me, that shows an increase of one point four six in the mill rate. Now, last year, if you remember, the way the budgets were presented, we were looking at an increase of point six six mills. This board actually made a motion to increase that to point eight, because we didn't believe that we were going to get as much education ECS funds as what was being budgeted, and that turned out to be perfectly true. So we were in a better position last year by going from point six six to a point eight increase, and that generated about three hundred thousand dollars for you all to buy your time to figure out what we could do this year. But I'm not seeing any solutions this year. I'm not, I'm not seeing that that time bought us anything. And so, you know, like, I didn't feel comfortable with point six six, knowing that we were going to get these large increases in the next three or four years, so I wanted to bump it up. I even wanted to bump it up a little bit more than one percent last year. Because I hate to see like a point five mill increase and then a two mill increase, you know, I'd much rather have a more equitable, or I don't know, like a standard increase on the taxpayers, maybe something that they can rely on, something that they can budget for. So for always somewhere around one, like a one mill increase, you know, and we set that, I don't want to say standard, but expectation, then families can actually plan for that. But when you go from point six six to one point five, you know, that's really hard on families. So I don't think that two hundred is enough from the Board of Ed this year. I think that one hundred and twenty-five may be too much for the town, because that's, you know, it's bare bones, you know, I give it to you, it's bare bones, except for that salary and, you know, issue that we have. I think, I think we have to do more, that's just where I'm standing.
Where would we be, Anna, if I could, Chair, Mr. Chair? We're going to receive a one point seven million dollars in cuts from the state over two years. One point two last year, and about a half a million this year, I rounded that out, but let's just call it what it is. So that's one point seven million cut. If I could give your budget or your revenue side one point seven million, what would be the end result of our mill rate increase for this year? Is there a way to easily calc that, to put one point seven million in? In other words, what's the difference between what the state has done to us and what we're doing to ourselves? Budgets, right? So I dare say you're going to be very, very close to a good number if you take out what the state has cut. The state cuts really are, we're going to find efficiencies, and we have, but really, it's expected that it's going to affect the property taxes, period, you know, and, you know, where are we going to get, what do we have left in state aid, you know, another six million? Where's that going to come from? It's got to go to property tax. It is going to price people out of, out of the state, certainly, you know, this town, but not, they can't go anywhere else for relief. They're not going to go anywhere in the state for relief if the state is really going to start taking away the state aid. There's nowhere to go. But go south. The pendulum will swing, there will be...
Can we, can we buy a little time, though? Can we buy a little time? I mean, we're waiting for gateway, we're waiting for some development of a big parcel of land in town. I mean, I think when that whole thing was sold to the town, you know, I don't want to say promises were made, but the expectation was maybe our assessed values in property would go way up, taxes would come down. So there is a little hope, you know, maybe, I think, there's a little hope.
The highway...
No, is it dead? Is it dead?
You know, if I could pin one thing on Costco's departure, it's the highway. But the good news is, the highway project is still going to happen, and it's, within three years, they're going to start shoveling the ground. Engineering, engineering is out right now, funding is going to happen for this project. They're actually talking about, well, they're going to have to do the bridge over here, the Niantic River Bridge, and how is it going to marry up with the other project to make sure that if there's a problem here, people can get onto the highway and all that. So they're timing it, I mean, so it's on. That has to happen before development happens in that field. And I think Costco knew that, too. More has to happen on that highway. But, but at least the bridge and the on-ramps, off-ramps have to happen. So we're still a half a decade away from real, you know, four million dollars extra in the pocket every year, honestly. But then again, the developers are out there, they own the land, and they are marketing it.
It just feels like for about fifteen, twenty years, we've been half a decade away from it.
Oh, I know, you and I worked on this eighteen years ago, eighteen years ago.
Yes. All right, if we want to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I'm a trendsetter.
Yes, you are.
But you can tell jokes while we're all...
Microphones are on.
We lost everybody.
Back in session. Should have broke earlier. All right. So we don't have any more, any more specific discussion on the fund balance before we get back into the budget?
Well, do we want to resolve that fund balance first or not?
It feels to me like the two go hand in hand, because the fund balance affects what the overall budget, or how painful the overall budget is. So the two, obviously, it's a balanced equation. So I'm hard-pressed not to say that we have to try to figure out what we're going to do with this, but because it's on the revenue side, we can talk through it some more. So does anybody have any, do we have any more conversations if we want to go about the fund balance? If we want to figure out how it's going to offset growth within the Board of Ed and the town sides of the budget that we're talking about? Do we have any specific values that we think we would want to use to offset? In other words, we would want to decrease the Board of Ed budget by X number of dollars to decrease the amount of fund balance that we would have to use?
Well, so if I could go back to what you, I think, what you just said, Bill, I'm sorry, my brain's trying to figure stuff out here. I, I think we don't want to fund a budget going forward by taking money out of the fund balance, because that's how we got in this jam. If we, if we didn't take it out, then we would have built a budget around whatever the expenditures are. Now we're trying to get out from underneath that, just to get back to a place of zero. So I'm just saying, going forward, I don't know how many years in the past, other than last year, we've, we've created a budget dipping into the fund balance. Do you have some idea of that, Anna?
Every year, right?
Every year we dip into it to create...
About that number, too.
Well, how come we don't have it in...
Seventeen.
In actuals in seventeen? We didn't need it? We didn't need it? Yeah, it's not, there's nothing there.
Yeah, there should've, we should've
Yeah, what was that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said that there should've been something in there.
So, we did dip into the fund balance in seventeen? Do you have some idea how much?
I'll have that for you in one minute.
Thank you. So, I'm just saying, as a practice, it's, it seems to me that it's not a good practice because we just keep, our denominator keeps getting bigger.